We're going to call the meeting of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors to order. If you would, please rise and Mr. Warner will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. That takes us to item number four on the agenda. Are there any requests to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation?
No, no, go ahead.
Ms. Chairman, just an addition to item 8A, change the number from one appointment to two appointment, that's all. Just a clerical error.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Madam Chair, I have one possible change, and Tom, if you'll weigh in if you need to. It's very small. Item 7B is on the consent agenda. It's the approval of last meeting's minutes. I was not able to attend due to illness last month, so I would have to abstain. On the consent agenda, I have no way of voting abstain. So, we can do one or two things. We can either invoke some sort of Roberts Rule that lets us do this the easy way, or we can pull this off the consent agenda and make it item 10D.
Green, a couple of things. First, you're not actually required to abstain from voting on minutes that you weren't present in the meeting. You are allowed to vote on those minutes if you choose to. If you want to, if you do want to abstain, it will need to be pulled out as a separate item.
Okay. I hate to have to do the formality, but I would like to vote on it, and I would like to pull that from the consent agenda and make it item 10D.
Second.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Sure. It's item 7B?
Yes, I'm making it.
I want to pull that, and I guess it would be item 10D. That would be up to you.
10D. Sounds great.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tucker, second. We're all in favor.
Aye.
All right. That takes us to our first public comment period. We invite members of the public to share their thoughts on the matters and issues that are germane to county business. If you are here to speak on an item on tonight's agenda that is having a public hearing, you must wait and share your thoughts during the public hearing on each specific item. This is not a forum for political campaigning, promoting a business, or personal attacks. Please keep your comments focused on the issues and subject matter over which this board has responsibility, and please keep your comments to three minutes if you are speaking as an individual, and five minutes if you are representing a group. Please point out the group at the onset of your comments. So that the staff may get the name and address correct in the minutes, please sign in and state your name and address for the record. You'll notice that we have moved the podium to this side of the room, and the sign-up sheet is on that side of the room as well. So, there you go. Thank you very much.
I don't believe this is going to help. How do we cut this? There we go. You have a copy of the slides that I'm going to show you. They're in little numbers, so I gave you hard copies. My name is Bill Cox. I live at 1405 Giles Bridge Road, and I'm a member of the Planning Commission. In April of this year, Karen Carmack, Chair of the Planning Commission, and I contacted Dr. Jones about some metrics that we wanted crisped up. How many students would a residential development generate? And how do schools measure capacity and decide when the need to expand facilities? We met with Dr. Jones on April 23rd, and you have a copy of his response to Karen and I. What he said was, we would use a multiplier of .5 for every residential house that's constructed, in other words, half a student. And so now the Planning Commission, our staff, and the schools are all using the same metric. We took a look at that, and it made a lot of sense to us. Then he looked in terms of capacity. He moved to functional capacity of schools as opposed to architectural capacity, which is the way the schools measure it. And for planning purposes, and when they start new construction at an elementary school, they do that when it reaches 85% capacity, and at middle schools and high schools, it's when it reaches 90% capacity. And so, based on his numbers, Pocahontas Elementary and Powhatan High have reached those capacity numbers and are, we need to start planning and constructing new facilities. So, now you find the CIP from April, and you see $2,005,000 in there for a new elementary school property, and $7,100,000 for the expansion of the high school. Following that are the backup for Powhatan High School, which provides the backup information, and it says that we want a, in 2024, expansion of 13,585 feet, and it goes on. The next one is the elementary school and the backup for the land expansion for $2,005,000. So, they put it in the CIP, and they backed it up with their thoughts about it. Now, we get to tonight, July, CIP, and the county administrator has taken the $2,005,000 and the $7,100,000, and he has pushed them out to the out years. In other words, he's taken them out of the need basis for the next five years. So, the schools have demonstrated a financial need in the next five years. The need is based on events and information which has already taken place. This is not about prospective stuff. To ignore the need is to make a farce of financial planning. So I request that they, I ask, I request that y'all request the county administrator to put the $9,006,000 back into the CIP, so we have an adequate picture of what's going to happen to us with school planning over the next five years. Thank you.
Jim Carver, can you hear me? All right, sorry. I live at 4245 Stecker Creek Drive. I live in 5th District. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As you're probably already aware, the board, the VDOT meeting held last week did not, did not go very well at all. I want to first acknowledge, I know many members of the board and some of the Planning Commission have done a lot of great work with VDOT and Lee Ware and Glenn Sturtevant, et cetera. So I know there's a lot of ongoing work, but I wanted to bring some perspective from a citizen that attended that meeting. The meeting was poorly executed, in my opinion. Notably, there was poor sound. No one was working to control the question and answer periods. Reluctantly, one VDOT, VDOT rep did step forward after he was cajoled by a citizen to please step forward and take charge of the meeting. There were numerous VDOT representatives in the back that could have aided, but failed to act. So, I was able to ask one question after waiting quite a while, and my question was reference the scope of the study, and specifically the impact of current, current and future traffic on the life cycle maintenance costs, which I think are critical, life cycle maintenance cost of our roads, specifically the section of road from Old Tavern to Cumberland County line, which we all know is at least 75th worst in the regional area, and is a big concern. The VDOT staff relayed that that's not within scope of their study, and that concerns me greatly. Again, I know many of you are aware of this, but I wanted to give you my perspective as a citizen. So, there are three things that I would ask that the board consider acting upon if it's possible. Number one, please contact the VDOT leadership and relay how poorly the public meeting was, and request a follow-up meeting so that all the citizens can be heard and the information can be thoroughly fleshed out. I think that's reasonable. Number two, insist the deadline that has been imposed upon the citizens of 3 August to provide feedback on the VDOT study. We have a deadline of 3 August, but yet, the meeting and information was incomplete. I, I can certainly provide feedback by 3 August, but I think it's unfair to put that suspense on the citizenry. I would at least move that out a week, or I would wait a week until they can have a follow-on meeting to clear up a lot of the confusion that came out of the meeting. Thirdly, and finally, continue to aggressively pursue a more detailed scope of the impacts on the traffic of Route 60, not just the 103 mile, let's think of some innovative ways to handle traffic. They need to study the scope and impacts of traffic, specifically the landfill that will, is a train wreck getting ready to happen on the segment from Old Tavern to Cumberland County. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
My name is Woody Kofa, Powhatan, Virginia. I noticed on the agenda tonight, Article 7B, I think, was postponed, which is the approval of the July 24th meeting. I'd like to make amendment to one of the motions y'all made, and that was on the golf carts for all the streets in Powhatan Village. Y'all left out three of them. So before you vote on it, I'd like for you to add those three to that amendment. And on page 23 of your package, there's a list of them, and the fourth paragraph down, I'd like to see y'all add on there Village Pool Road, which is Old Nations Methodist Church, Erin Hill Drive, and John Letney Lane. And that will give you all the roads in the Courthouse Village. And they are off the record, so it's something to consider. I wish y'all would change that before you do it, so everybody will do it. Thank y'all.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this public comment period. That takes us to item seven, the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Gotcha. All right, that takes us to item 8A. This is the two appointments to the Library Board of Trustees. That's Geraldine Venable, Jerry Venable, and Susan Ash. They are both long-serving members. Mr. Tucker, would you like to?
I move to reappoint Jerry Venable. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. And then I'd move to appoint Susan Ash.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Lucky to have their service. This brings us to 9A, Presentation of the Fire and Rescue Department Scholarships. I'm so used to looking at them right here.
Good evening. Phil Warner, Acting Fire Chief, Powhatan Fire and Rescue. Thank you, board members, and Mr. Boyes, for the opportunity for the Fire and Rescue Department to recognize five scholarship winners for 2019. They're divided into two categories. We have our FEMA grant, which has been administered by Joe Sposa for the last three years, done a fantastic job, and he's our Recruitment and Retention Officer, award-winning recruitment and retention program. We've been, had super fantastic success through the first three years, and looking forward forward for a great fourth year. So he's up here to help me with this. And the first two of the folks that we're going to recognize are our FEMA scholarships, which are for interior firefighters, and they're our active interior firefighters. Number one is Jordan Fisher, Company Two. Thank you, sir. Do you want to stand up here for a minute? Number two is a $1,500 scholarship to Tom Berry, Thomas Berry. He's another Company Two member. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And then our second group of scholarship recipients are, for our non-firefighters, are EMS providers, and they're represented by Fire and Rescue. And number one, which is a $500 scholarship, is to Monica Plum. I don't think she's in attendance tonight, but we're glad to give it to her. Number two, I'll get you Madison. Number two is a Company Two member, Danae Johnson. She's an EMS provider at Company Two. Thank you, ma'am. And then our final scholarship recipient is Madison Blaska. She is also one of our communications officers in the, in the 911 Center. Thank you so much. And I'd like for everybody to give this group a round of applause. And thank you for the opportunity to, to be able to present in front of the board.
Y'all ready for a picture?
Laura McFarland cannot be here tonight, so she asked if I would please take the picture. I'm probably not as good as she is. Joe, can you scoot in a little bit? Turn it sideways. She wants to come back. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just a brief comment. I'd like to thank those individuals for the service of the county, because truly, you make us what we are in this county. We couldn't get things done without you, so thank you so much.
Bravo.
This is the five-year capital improvement plan, which is paid, found on page 142 of your packet, if you'd like to follow along at home. And is that going to be Charlotte?
So, Board Member Seven, I'll introduce us just by saying that this is, this was on the agenda for the board to consider at budget adoption time. The key driver of bringing it here tonight was a request that we do some financial modeling to show what debt service would look like when combined with our existing debt load, and how that might look off into the five-year planning horizon that we have included. And so we worked with our financial advisor, Davenport, to create the appendix in your document that, that shows how that debt would look layered in. And I know of particular importance to the board is how it fits within your policy goal of moving debt as a percentage of operating expenses down to the 12% target level. And so that is highlighted in the document, and you can kind of see how that looks. Nothing in, in the plan here is a commitment by this board to issue any debt. This is a plan, and of course, annually, the board considers whether you want to fund anything in the plan, and how you want to fund it. Some funding options include cash funding, or as we sometimes call it, pay-as-you-go capital, lease funding. We typically do that for school buses, sometimes for other similar equipment, like fire trucks. We can do installment purchase contract financing, or bank financing, similar to a mortgage or a car loan. And then we can do bond financing. We've certainly done that during this board's term. We did, did that last fall for some new projects, and we recently conducted a refinancing to take existing debt, keep the same length of term, but get a lower interest rate. So, some things do change in our assumptions. What's in the plan can be added to or subtracted from, and then the underlying financial information can change as well, depending on the assessed valuation of our community's property values. And as you know, this is a revaluation year, so we'll, we'll have some impact to that coming up in the next budget. All that being said, this is a, a living document that we annually visit. There's no requirement under the Code of Virginia that we adopt a CIP, but it is a best practice. And the plan now before you is the staff's current recommendation on how to look at our potential capital projects over the next five-year planning horizon, and then some assumptions about how that could be financed during that time period. And we are available to answer questions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
The reason I requested this analysis was because we needed to know if we had a realistic plan in terms of our ability to layer in debt in conformance with our budget policies. When I made the recommendation that we look at the amounts that we have to be funded by bonds and short-term leases, I wanted to make sure that we had the capacity going out into five years of the plan to layer in the debt. Mr. Tucker added to my motion, a request that we look at projects that entail more staff and cost that's going to impact our expenditure budget, that we include those things as well. I see some of it with the schools, you know, with the planned addition. I don't see the rest of it. Now, let's go back and look at our capital improvement plans for the last several years. The adopted CIP for 2018 has the 7.1 million for the school, high school addition, and it also has the 2.5 million for the land acquisition for our new elementary school. 19 likewise has them in. And then what was proposed to us this year at the beginning of the budget and CIP formation was that they were going to be in as well, and they were. So tonight, after the analysis, they're gone. Now, I don't know how I planned when I know the schools are telling us, and they've been telling us, that we should be making sure that we have capacity in alignment with our debt policies to be able to layer in this debt for these things that they're going to need. So taking them out of the CIP and pushing them into the years doesn't help us. Now, what we learned from the analysis, if you look at Davenport, they went through and they said, okay, if you only layer in the first year, then you'll get back to 12% fairly quick, within a year. But then if you do the second year, the third year, the fourth year, and if you do the whole CIP, you won't get back to 12% before the year 28, 29. And that means, when we borrowed the $9.4 million just recently, after, two years after we borrowed the $54.5, I said then, you'll never get back now to 12%. The new norm will be something north of 12 and south of 15. So what you see in this revised CIP, that's gone from 30-some million, approximately 30 million in bonds and short-term leases, now it's 18 million something. If you do all five years, you don't get back down to 12% till the year 28, 29. And you only get there because you're saying, again, you're not going to layer in any debt after year 24. And we know that's not going to happen. And now you've pushed the schools out there beyond year 24, and you're saying, nope, they're not going to need a high school addition, nope, they're not going to need to plan for the land for a new elementary school. That's not realistic, folks. And I don't think that's the way we should be doing planning. We need to be able to know what's out there on the horizon and make informed choices about what projects we want to do now, tomorrow, next year, following year, year after, and be able to look at everything that we have on the table, and then choose as to how we're going to accomplish the things that we know we have to accomplish. Now, when the county administrator presented his capital improvement plan, he only showed the first year, I remember, in the PowerPoint presentation. I said, let me see all five years. So we went and we looked at all five years at that point, doing it, when I said, that night. I said, doing it one year at a time? That doesn't get it. That's putting the blinders on and acting like nothing else is going to follow. That's not planning. So go back now, we find ourselves in a situation now, even with the reduced amount that we're going to go in debt for, for the 18 million for the CIP for the next five years, we don't get back down to 12% until year 28, 29. 20, well, I assume people knew the prefix would be 20. So, but thank you. We want to be clear. But that's in the Davenport presentation, and I encourage everybody to look at it. So the question is, what is it that we're going to do to be able to address these known projects? And going back to the schools, Dr. Jones has already said, we're at 92% of functional capacity up at the high school. The metric for tripping is 90%. So we're already at 92, and this is from Dr. Jones. And they're already telling us, we've tripped the metric, you know, for a new elementary school with a lesser percentage. So, I don't think we should be pushing these projects out of the five-year CIP, particularly because they've been there for so many years, and they're coming. And to act like they're not coming and go out there and borrow for other things when we know this is on the horizon, it doesn't make sense to me. That's not planning. I said, when we got the capital improvement plan, I said, some localities have a 10-year capital improvement plan. Back when I was on the Planning Commission, we referenced that, but we never had a 10-year I'm going to recommend that we go to a 10-year CIP, and I'm going to recommend, before we adopt a CIP tonight, that again, we go out there and look at a 10-year CIP, so that we can make informed choices about our debt policy and that getting back to 12, and figuring out how we're going to do it within this five-year period, looking at the next five as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. I'll add just another thought to that, because I spoke to Dr. Jones about school capacity in February of this year, and I have an email from him dated February the 21st, saying, and I'll quote, "Our current enrollment trend line is very flat with minimal to no growth, and our class sizes remain very good." And then he says, "You can find details on a, on each of these in a following presentation I delivered to the school board last week." So is this information from Dr. Jones new?
It's as new as the meetings, and I have the copies of the emails, if you'd like to see them, because they were shared with me. And I've got an email exchange with our own staff, where they're saying that we're at 92%, and they're saying we start planning at 90%. So yes, we do have information subsequent to that, where they've communicated to Mrs. Carmack and to Mr. Cox about where we're at and what we need to do.
Okay. Any other comments?
I do, Madam Chair. Wow, thanks, Mr. Williams, for a comprehensive look at what we're considering tonight. That's valuable. I have a van that has 330,000 miles on it, over 330,000 miles on it. It's been to the moon and 50,000 miles back this way. It's an incredible van, but I know I'm going to have to replace that van within five years. I can just feel it. It's starting to show its age. So I'm planning on saving money, I've already begun that, planning on a figure, planning on a new vehicle to replace this one. It might be a year from now, it might be two, it might be three, somewhere in there. Same procedure applies to this county. I'm looking at potential growth. I too looked at the metrics, 92% for the high school, 85% for the elementary school. We're there. If we get significant growth in the residential area, we will be building schools. We will be at least putting additions on a high school. That's a fact. And then there's the consideration that when you build a school and you have more residential growth, then you have a need for more personnel in the sheriff's office, you have a need for more fire and rescue personnel, we've been wrestling with that just the last few months. There's more traffic. All of these things add to the cost. You also have the salaries for teachers. You also have the salaries for teachers, benefits, et cetera. So where does the money come from if we don't properly plan? Well, I'll tell you where it comes from. Comes from you. We're talking about a significant tax increase over this five-year term if we don't plan correctly and line up our bond packages and line up our leases according to reality. And that's the bottom line that I see here. I looked at those charts today, it took me about 15 minutes, and my head was spinning afterwards. It's, okay, this is what the chart looks like if we include this, and then if we layer on this, it looks like that, and it looks like this. But I, too, am uncomfortable with pushing the school needs out more than five years when the school board themselves recognized in their own CIP that within five years we have to deal with these issues. That's significant. Are we going to ignore the school board? We give most of the money, so to speak. We slide a big bag of money over to the schools every year, from this board to that, and it's more than half. So this is a significant issue. I'm definitely promoting a delay on this vote tonight. We need to look harder at this. I think we need that information Mr. Williams asked for about, on the operating budget side, what is this going to do? Like I said, further needs for teachers, employees, fire and rescue, sheriff's office, maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. We need that information. And I would just like to say one thing about enrollment being flat. Enrollment will be flat if we don't add large residential development, as far as we can tell. But this board, three out of five, have changed the future land use map to accommodate that very thing. Large-scale, think over 200 units, residential growth. That will, if we're not at the tipping point now, which the data says we are, that will definitely put us over the tipping point. So a statement that enrollment is flat today has no bearing if we start putting in large-scale residential projects, which currently I'm against. So I think we need to think about all these things, and my bottom line is this: we need a plan that's realistic. You have to do that. If we come up with a plan that I look at and say, that makes sense, that, to me, is a realistic picture of what this county's going to be doing in the next five years, and we adjust the CIP and our operating budget accordingly, I will vote for that all day long. This is not ready for primetime. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I have another statement, more question. This is for you, Tom. If we move out the amounts that we have at the schools, and by the way, it was in the school board's CIP, these two things, it's their CIP. If we take a mode of our CIP, what does this do for our ability to negotiate, receive a proffer for schools?
Well, it doesn't make it impossible to negotiate or receive a proffer. It certainly makes it more difficult. If it's in their CIP, it's much easier to point to it and say, we're asking for proffer for this. If it's not in the CIP, it's more likely that a developer's going to use that against us. And so, in that sense.
And, go ahead while we're on the proffer issue just now. Majority of the boards voted to give back proffers. How does that affect us going forward?
What we did in the past has no effect on what we do in the future.
Thank you, Tom. Were you going somewhere? David, did you have a motion? My motion is what I said in my previous comments. My motion would be to not take action tonight, but instead, task staff, Davenport, to go back and develop a 10-year CIP, taking into consideration known things that we have on the horizon, that we're planning for, so that we can make informed choices within the five-year CIP, and look at the informed choices as it relates to our debt capacity, not only for those five years, but going forward for the next five years, and have a plan that realistically gets us to the goal that we say we wanted to do, and that was to get back to 12%. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty. Item 10B, Founder's
Madam Chairman, before we proceed, excuse me. I'm for the last thing you said, to get it back to 12%. When we passed that originally, we said ASAP, and that doesn't mean eight years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Founder's Bridge Utility Company Acquisition Update.
Is this on? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I think you have to lean into it.
I'm not tall enough to lean in.
Move the podium over to the chairs.
This is on page 259 of your packet, and it's just, as you know from past meetings, we're in the process of negotiating on the acquisition of Founder's Bridge, and so we're in our due diligence stage where we're gathering information, and so we've got
Ramona, I'm sorry, I'm getting indications nobody can hear in the
Can hear.
Can I pull it closer? Is that better?
Ask.
Better? Okay, sorry. So we are in our due diligence stage, and so we're gathering information, and we have a third-party engineer that's evaluating financial records, we have maintenance records, GIS mapping, and surveying information. So we were gathering all of that information together to proceed with the acquisition, and we were planning on going forward with the acquisition separate from the Chesterfield water agreement that we're working on. But when we got a draft agreement from Chesterfield, the numbers didn't work for us. It wasn't financially feasible with the conditions that Chesterfield was giving us. So we met back with Chesterfield and told them what we needed to make it work for us, and so they are going to evaluate, and we're going to meet again in September. So it's pushing the whole acquisition out a few months, but it gives us more time. So, and I'll answer any questions.
Madam Chair, I would just like to thank Ramona and the county administrator for following up with my suggestion that we do get outside people to take a look at this, because as Ramona and I have met and talked on more than one occasion, it's not every day you take over a utility system. So we owe it to ourselves, we know it's to the people in the county, to make sure that we're making a good decision, and making sure it's going to be one that benefits everybody and doesn't come back to bite us. So I would like to thank you all for doing that. Thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
One question. Do we have any idea, we've been dragging on for two years, do we have any idea of a timeline looking forward, or it's just what it is?
If Chesterfield comes back and says that they'll change the agreement to how we want it, then we will probably proceed, because then it would be financially feasible. So we're still probably a few months out, so we're kind of targeting for the end of the year to make it happen, but if Chesterfield doesn't move on their agreement, then it's not going to work for us.
Okay.
I'm sure that if you need help, Mr. Williams would be glad to go with you.
Yes, I would.
All right. Any other comments?
Okay. Mrs. Carter, are you going to do the next one, the request? Okay, this is the request for approval of the voluntary no-smoking policy for parks and recs, facilities, and grounds.
And this is on page 260 in your packet. At the June 24th meeting, I brought forward a policy, a suggestion for smoking, non-smoking in the parks and recreation facilities and grounds, and you authorized us to go forward with doing some more research, and one of the pieces was to find out how Chesterfield dealt with smoking areas. And so we did reach back out to them, and they do not have smoking areas, and they don't, theirs is a volunteer policy, and so they have signs and say, no smoking on the various dugouts and fields and fences, but they do not have a designated smoking area. So we have, we went out and toured all of our facilities to see where we could place signs, and we looked at the current location of the smoking areas that, where we allow smoking, and we decided that there would not be a good place to relocate it to. So we are selecting to go with what Chesterfield is doing and not have a smoking area and place signs on the various facilities. So it works out to, we determined that we need 38 signs. It's 20, approximately $2,300 out of the operating budget.
Okay.
So you need a motion from us to authorize you to proceed?
Yes.
I have a question first, Mr. Tucker.
Excuse me.
Well, no, if you do the motion, we'll do it in discussion, that's fine. Go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Madam Chair, discussion?
Ramona, thanks for bringing this up and doing the work on this. Right now, we have the smoking area, I'm thinking about Fighting Creek Park, and in the middle of four baseball fields, right where the concession stand is, right where everybody has to travel. I used to coach over there, liked many. You've got kids from T-ball age all the way up, you know, just about to go into seniors and whatever, are there, and these kids are in that smoking area, passing through that smoking area, et cetera, et cetera. And I like, I like freedom, all I can get, but as they say, as long as it doesn't harm others. There's a debate about secondhand smoke and how harmful, if at all, until they definitely settle that debate, I think it's best to keep children away from cigarette smoke, especially children whose siblings are playing, I don't know if you're aware of this, their siblings are on the baseball field and they're bored, so the kids often play in the smoking area. That's a bad combination. So I like the approach of voluntary cooperation, where people, it makes them think about the situation that they're in, and it makes them make a decision. And I think here in Palatine, most people would be respectful if they see a bunch of kids playing or whatever. I don't think they're going to light up and, you know, blow a lot of smoke around that area. So I like the approach. It's a lot similar to the thing I did a couple of years ago, the Drive Like Your Kids Live Here campaign, where you put up 10 or 12 signs in a neighborhood, and you leave it up for 10 days. People slowed down. They didn't have to, there wasn't a speed limit sign, but it made people think about the issue and make a snap decision, and usually, in that case, they slowed down. I think in this case, they'll go somewhere else to light up, or they'll just smoke later. So I like this idea. Thanks for doing this.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, this takes us to 10D. This will be the approval of the June 24th minutes, and to address the comment earlier, I've given to Mr. Voorhees the names of the three roads, I'm sorry, to be included. So thank you for pointing those out, and
I'm sorry to interrupt, Madam Chairman, we can't fix that by changing the minutes. If it wasn't in the original motion, we can't, we can't make the minutes say something that wasn't done in the motion itself. So, you know, we can go back and see, but I doubt they were in the motion, so I'm sure the minutes are accurate. So we can't, via minutes, change what wasn't done by motion at the meeting.
Madam Chair, if I might, I think the way we set this ordinance up, too, was to make it easy to amend by adding new streets as they qualified for this treatment. I also am aware that of the streets that were mentioned, several of them still have not, or hadn't been posted at the proper speed limit by VDOT, so wouldn't be eligible for golf cart use until that time. So I might suggest that we just, you know, direct this back to staff to continue to work with VDOT, to post the appropriate signs, and then when, when all that's said and done, we can come back with an amendment for the board to expressly add those additional streets once they've been posted and accepted into the state system, that sort of thing.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Are they going to consider other things that we didn't talk about that night, such as requirement for headlights on these golf carts? I mean, because I can, well, imagine people are going to be riding them in dust, or maybe in some cases, after dark. So would it not be a good idea to have staff look at other localities to see what they've included in their ordinance where they have golf carts, to make sure that we're doing this in a safe way?
Is this something you'd like to speak to, Sheriff Nunley?
A lot of those are covered in state code, so it should require the headlights.
I just want, I just want to make sure people understand that, you know. It was kind of like the issue about, okay, you know, when you get to this point, going down 13, going through the village, you're no longer allowed. I mean, you're going to have a sign that says, no co-carts beyond this point, I mean, no golf carts beyond this point. Go-karts are coming next, we'll get those in.
Yeah, I think we'll probably go aggressive with the, to the larger communities in the village here, with the big movie.
Yeah, thank you.
All righty, so is there a motion to accept the June 24th minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All righty, and then, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. That takes us to item 11A, resolution approving a special assessment for Plan RVA's fund balance. Mr. Voorhees.
Madam Chair, member, members of the board, as I explained in the agenda statement, this is a small special assessment being sent to every member of the Plan RVA jurisdictions. In our case, it's less than $3,000. The goal of the special assessment is to raise the fund balance of Plan RVA to the, to the RVA, Plan RVA Board's million-dollar goal. When this first came out, my reaction was that that was a fairly arbitrary goal, and that I thought giving them a chance to improve their fund balance position through, you know, better financial operations over time might be a more prudent way to address the fund balance. But that was just my opinion. The board itself decided that they would, they would like to pursue the special assessment. I, I don't recommend this, because it's arbitrary, and there's no particular magic to a million dollars as the fund balance number, and they've given us a choice, do we pay it now, pay it over time, pay it later, or not pay it at all? So my recommendation is not to pay it at all. However, I certainly understand if the board wishes to, in good faith, play nicely in the sandbox with all our other neighbors and go ahead and, and pay this, then my recommendation would be that we pay it at the beginning of next fiscal year so we can put it in the budget.
Any comments on this, Mr. Nordvig?
I do. I'm in these meetings every month down at Plan RVA, the PDC, some people might know it as. I will say that Ted is correct, the 1 million was an arbitrary number. It was brought up by one of the other supervisors from another locality and kicked around as that number felt like a good safety net number. It had no real mathematics behind it. It was just sort of a, I like a million dollars, I'd like a million dollars, too, that would make me feel safe. But it wasn't really in any way scientifically or financially sound. So I agree with that. I was in the room when that happened. The other thing is Martha Schickel, the executive director, had a tough job when she first came in, she's been in the job a couple of years. I think she's doing a fine job. I see her more than once a month because of committee things. And bottom line is this: Plan RVA has gone through some changes that were painful, both personnel and financially, and those things are subsiding, if not pretty much, over. So what I'm talking about is a lot of personnel changes where there may have been payouts or benefits and whatnot, things that were unexpected in a reasonable operating budget. So that put a little bit of a pinch on them. And the next thing is, they're looking at, at a planned move. The space that they lease right now is very expensive, there's a lot of space that goes unused, they've taken some measures to lessen that, but I, if I'm reading the tea leaves right, they're probably going to move to a space that's far less expensive. There's a couple little hitches there, like where, where should the meetings be? There's a couple little hitches there, like where, where should the meetings be, and that kind of thing, once a month. But they're gonna solve those things. And basically, everything that Martha and the team are doing down at Plan RVA is improving the bottom line. So when it comes to, should we hand them a chunk of money, along with the other eight localities, to give them their warm and fuzzy feeling of a million dollars, I personally do not think it's necessary, having been in those meetings. I think they're gonna come through this just fine. We just have to give them a little bit more time. I'm willing to look at it, months or a year down the road, and if they are in dire need, then we can look at it again. Thank you.
All right. Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
I would like to make a motion that we deny Resolution R 201934, and that would not approve a special assessment to replenish Plan RVA.
Wait a minute. I think you're gonna affirm that motion.
I'm doing that backwards?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm affirming the resolution, which is a no--
Yes.
--to the assessment. Thank you.
Second.
There you go.
All righty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Quarterly Financial Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It is our, I feel like I'm on repeat because I feel like I just did the last quarter, but time's going by fast. So this is our quarterly report as of June 30, which is technically the end of our fiscal year. But as you know, I'm still currently working on accruals and year-end closing out, but wanted to still look at where we are as of the technical June 30 date. The property taxes, we have come in very well so far, $996,000 over our budget. A good bit of that is delinquent taxes. Again, our Treasurers Office does a very good job of collecting, as well as additional business personal property, that as new businesses come in and their property is reassessed, it did increase with their returns that they turn in. Our building, obviously, you could tell, is up, and that's a, that's, I think everybody knows that homes are being built and additions being done, so we had additional revenue collected there. We also, local sales tax is showing below, but we still have 60 days to accrue back. Hopefully, we will meet our budget. I did see the next month we've collected in July that will be accrued back, that's $300,000. I did look at that today, so that, that is positive. And some of our other state money, we will be accruing back. So I think we are in good shape as of this time, and will continue to be in good shape. As the expenditures, our departments are very diligent of paying attention to their budgets, and we, we send out monthly reports every month. I've been sending, as June comes, I send them weekly reports, and they are all under budget as of right now. We are still accruing some things back, but that will, that is actually coming to a close as far as expenditures are concerned. So I think we're in good shape, and I look forward to, my goal is the September 23rd meeting to bring you the pre-audit financials, which will show all of the accruals and our fund balance and capital maintenance reserve. That's my goal. So I stand ready to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
I do. Real quick, Charlotte, maybe I missed it, but good news on the $996,000 over budget. That's cool. Maybe we can get a new plastic mailbox for the supervisors with some of that, I don't know. Sales tax, you said sales tax is below, but--
It's below--
But we're gonna have assessments still coming in.
Yeah, it's below budget right now, but--
Is there a number attached to that that's kind of a soft number?
It's $702,000 right now.
Okay.
But we do have, that's only technically 10 months of the year because it's on an accrual basis, so we still have two more months to accrue back to that.
Right. I understand. So that's a moving target number right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Do we, do we have the approved budget up on the website?
I have not yet. I am very close to getting all the formatting to where it looks nice and fancy, and I will get that up hopefully by the end of this week, if not, the beginning of next week.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All righty. Thank you very much. This brings us to our final public comment period. I'll just remind you of the guidelines from the beginning of the meeting. We do invite members of the public to share your thoughts on matters and issues that are Jermaine County business. It's not a forum for political campaigning, promote a business, or personal attacks. Keep your comments focused on the issues and subject matter over which this board has responsibility. Please limit your comments to three minutes if you're speaking as an individual, and five minutes if you are representing a group. And please do not forget to sign in. Is there anybody that would like to make a, a comment? Seeing none, we'll close that comment period and move into county attorney comments.
No comments.
County Administrator comments.
Just pointing out, the date on your agenda, Thursday, October 24th, we've been asked to use that as a placeholder for a regional welcome event. I would note that this came out of the fact that we're members of Richmond Region Tourism, and that includes, you know, the, the big four in our region, but also us and now New Kent. There's a lot of overlap with that group and Plan RVA, as well as the Airport Authority, and the Convention Authority, and the Greater Richmond Chamber. So we're not actually on the Airport Authority, or part of Greater Richmond Partnership, or I guess we are a chamber member. So some of these things we're, we're members of, and some are not, but I think they're gonna extend as a courtesy to this regional event regardless, and it's a chance to meet your colleagues across the region. So it's just a placeholder, and that's explaining why we're on here, even though we're not involved with the airport or Greater Richmond Partnership.
Thank you.
Do we need to, do we need to ask one of us to be the representative of the county, or is it just open to everybody?
It's open to everybody.
Do we want to have an official representative? That's what, for us to ask? Or does anybody wants to go, go?
Well, we, we can ask the question, does the chairman intend to attend? Does Ted intend to attend? You know, you start there. And if they're not going to attend, then I think we should have somebody.
I think that I'm not really sure what I'm gonna be doing on October the 24th quite yet, but I can certainly take a look at that, and I do have it on my calendar. So I plan to attend, but would welcome you all to join me.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else? Board comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. It was brought up by the VDOT meeting the other night, and concerns about how it was conducted. I would like to share this information. Couple of weeks ago, approximate, Karen Carmack, Chairman of the Planning Commission, had set up a meeting with the Commissioner of VDOT. Invitations were extended to Lee Ware, Glenn Sturven, and myself, and we met with the Commissioner, along with Bart Thrasher. Bart used to be our district engineer. He's been promoted to the central office over on Broad Street. He attended the meeting. We agreed, as an outcome of that meeting, that VDOT would add additional things to the Route 60 corridor study. Specifically, it was agreed that they would provide the traffic counts from statewide planning system and the current level of services for all road segments on Route 60 in Palatane County, as well as 522. Intersections and levels of service would be addressed as well. And then they would do the modeling for the traffic impact of the 500 trucks and other known development. That would all be factored in, along with the rest of the study. So there is some progress on that front. Thank you, Madam Chair. And as I said at the meeting the other night, the concern that the citizens had that were there from Cumberland and from Palatane County, they want to know, is this gonna be safe? And if it's not gonna be safe, they want to know. And I think that's a fair question for the citizens in both localities.
Okay. Mr. Tucker, do you have any comments?
No.
Mr. Nordvig, do you have any comments?
Very quickly. Thanks. I'd like to publicly welcome Dunkin' Donuts to Palatane County. They just opened in District 2 on Saturday, and it was my pleasure to do the ribbon cutting there. Just like to mention a couple of things. They had an offer for, the first 50 people got free coffee for a year, I believe. In the dark, there were people lined up all around the building. They must have really good coffee. And they do. The franchise owner had 250 additional coupons for people, because he knew not everybody would get that free coffee, and he wanted people to be happy. He ran out of 250 coupons before he got to the end of the line. This is still in the dark before they opened.
May I ask the question?
Sure.
That means you must have been there in the dark with them. Is that correct?
I can neither confirm nor deny. But I can tell you, I'll be, I'll be a live-wire for the next year. Does that answer your question? So, and I asked the franchise owner, he gave me a tour of the facility, and I asked him, "How many donuts are you making today, anyway?" And he said, "Well, I planned for 4,800 donuts today. We surpassed that number at 9 o'clock this morning." So they made close to 10,000 donuts, is my guess, on Saturday alone. And let me kick this in there. When you go buy Dunkin' Donuts, I want you to consider this, and if you're watching archive footage or live streaming, same, same goes for everybody. Dunkin' Donuts started out with a very plain building design that they were going to put up there. And to make a very long story short, Dunkin' Donuts franchise owner and their staff were very much willing to work with Palatane because we had the new ordinances coming out about matching architecture, landscaping requirements, good transportation. Signage was another thing that was discussed. And so what Dunkin' Donuts did was, they changed their architectural plan. They put up, I'm sure you'd agree, a building that's just cute as a button, couple chimneys, a tin roof, big colonial plate glass windows, and an outdoor patio that you can eat in. It's got a couple separate rooms inside. It's, it's a gorgeous little building. I heard, I heard one citizen actually outside comment that that was the best-looking Dunkin' Donuts that they'd ever seen. So there's a great example, that's my poster child right now, for good architectural matching, good landscaping, and good signage. It makes for a more prosperous business. It makes for an attractive building that's gonna last for 30 or 50 years, and it makes for a darn good neighbor. So thank you for letting me welcome Dunkin' Donuts to Palatane, and come spend your money in District 2. Thanks.
Well done.
Any other comments, Mr. Tucker? All righty. So that will take us to a, in this meeting, we have a closed session to follow this.
Ready? "Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Palatane County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters: Discussion consideration of the assignment, performance, demotion, salary, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of the public body within emergency management, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation where such consultation or open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body with respect to RC zoning and the Patterson FOIA litigation. And whereas pursuant to sections 2.2, 3711A1 and A7 of Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Palatane County is hereby authorized discussion of state matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion."
Motion such?
Second? All in favor? All righty. Thank you. Thank you. So the microphones are on again. "Hereby reconvene this regular meeting of the Palatane County Board of Supervisors in open meeting, and request the clerk of the board to conduct a roll call certification vote of the supervisors to be included in the minutes of this meeting."
Do you certify, to the best of your knowledge, that, one, the only matters discussed in the closed meeting were public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements? And, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded? Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Melton is marked absent. Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mrs. Cabell?
Aye.
It passes four to zero.
There being no further business before the board, this meeting is adjourned.
At 7:42 PM.